Yes.
I move that we adjourn the work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor of adjournment of the work session signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourn. You will tap. Daniel? Hold on.
Everyone, please bag your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together tonight. Please grant the mayor and council guidance. And a special thank you for Ms. Hyatt being back tonight. This is her first city council meeting in a long time. She had a very strong recovery. And in any way pray. Amen.
Praise the Lord for Ms. Hyatt coming back. All right, thank you for coming back. Our city clerk, Ms. Hyatt, had a pretty serious illness she's come back from and she's here for her first full meeting since then, and we're very happy to have her. Thank gosh, because Daniel wasn't a wreck. I'm kidding. Daniel, you were good. Just because you're young, Daniel, that's all it is. Okay, call the roll, please. Well, I'll call this December 10th, 2013, regular meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Okay, the Mayor, J. Max Davis.
Here.
Rebecca Williams of District One.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Gabia, District Four.
Here.
All present, coral, thank you.
All right, would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to do the public hearing agenda?
Oh, is that, we can change that order there? Okay, sure. Do you do a motion for the... We're going to do commendations, or...
You just call an order for the public hearing.
Okay, now open the public hearing. For the budget. Public hearing for the budget. Anybody have any comments about the budget or questions? Okay, no names received? All right, close the public hearing.
Did you want any comments from Bonnie or myself?
Yeah, what I thought we were going to do is, we wanted to do what's on the agenda here, but okay, we'll do that. Go ahead.
Okay. This is the 2014 budget, and our finance officer will be able to go over some of the changes that we have made pursuant to meetings that we've had with each of you individually.
It's getting pretty hot up here, Brad. You want to maybe turn those things down a little bit?
All right, I'm not going to start all over with the budget. I'm just going to highlight some of the changes we've made based on meetings we've had.
Officers, if y'all want to sit down for a minute, I think it would make me feel a lot better. Stand down, yes, stand down. Chief, would you order them to stand down? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go through the list and stop me if you have any questions, but these are the major changes. All the raises were taken out. A decreased property tax revenue, $300,000 to take out the Century Center property taxes. Have more solid numbers for the City Hall and Police Headquarters, so I fine tuned the rent numbers and also added utilities for both those buildings. Added the positions and community development that were approved at the last meeting. Added funds for the zoning map audit. Added mayor council initiative program in the city manager's budget. And Marie may want to talk more about this, but this is for, allocated at $25,000 for council and mayor to do special projects. Right, this is, this is the opportunity to provide funding available for each council district of $25,000 and $25,000 for the mayor to be aware and be ready to participate on a city level with initiatives that may be going on within your district or the city at large, so it will enable you to make a discretionary award to further a project that would provide positive input to the city. Could be matters involving recycling or could be matters involving, could be Keep America Beautiful or Clean America for Brookhaven or...
Challenge League for the disabled youth.
Absolutely, Challenge Leagues. Could be that, it could be matching programs where community groups come together and they're trying to further some kind of improvement and have raised funds to X amount and are looking for a match, just identical to our AED program that's going on right now with the Friends of Brookhaven. So it will enable you to foster and accelerate improvements that are going on with each of your districts and, of course, the mayor at large. And again, the opportunity would be for council members to partner together to further a cause or the mayor to share his funds to tie into a project within a particular district. All right, added $60,000 sanitation, Decap Clean and Beautiful Grant Match. The county will match $60,000 if we put up the matching funds. We haven't got a workers' comp bill yet. We finally got one, and it looks like it's going to be due in 2014, so I'm going to put that in the '14 budget. It's the initial bill, and it's $250,000, but that's because it's like an experience pool, and we probably will get, when they do an audit next year, to see what was actually used, that'll fund us a few years. Added the police car loan payments. Now that the loan's finalized, the payments from that are going to run through the police budget. Lowered two vendor contract amounts. We finalized, I think we've got some more valid numbers on two of the employee vendor employment vendor contracts. And there was, moved an intern from the communications budget, moved it into the city manager's budget, a part-time intern. That's the big tickets.
Okay. I don't think, we've been asked, we've been meeting about all this.
Right.
I don't have any questions.
So the total budget changed $300,000 because of the taking Century Center out, but everything else, all the totals are the same.
All right. Anybody have anything for Bonnie?
Just to make sure that was clear, after we passed our vote, no longer to fund any further activity for Century Center, although we had included $300,000 of anticipated revenue that now has been pulled out, so there is no alliance for Century Center in any of our budget.
Right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie.
I just want to thank our city manager, Marie Yerick, for being such a tough negotiator on the contracts. If I'm, I don't know that I've got an exact count, but I think she saved us close to a million dollars on the...
More than that.
On the contracts. Okay, close to $2 million. It's a great thing for the city, and it means that we can really put more money into the services and the paving, the parks, and all the other good things, and even keep our, keep our taxes as low as possible. So, good work, Marie.
Thank you, Marie, and Bonnie and everybody.
Staff did a great job too, thank you so much.
We got a lot of good input, too, from a lot of the residents. They came back and had their thoughts and what you all wanted, and it's been a, it's been a very, very complete program. We've had, although there was no participation this evening, three public hearings on this, when only one was really required by law. So, first full year of, first budget on a full year's income. It was really interesting process. I think you guys did a great job. Yeah, I, kudos to you, I agree with Rebecca, and I think this is going to work out very well.
I would just have one more, one more question for Marie. Last week, we announced some budgets, some grants to parks.
Right.
And it went out, and I think there was a little bit of confusion as to exactly what was being spent, or if it was hard and fast, that it was going to go for a bathroom or a pavilion, or just what. Could you just clarify that a little bit?
Yes, absolutely. These grant awards are one-time awards, and as I expressed to you in previous meetings, it is my hope and it is my plan that this will be an annual event as we near the end of each fiscal year, the council will be able to make these decisions and grant these funds to the parks in the city. The grants, the numbers that were announced for each particular park was a total amount of money that would be available. We're still working with different friends groups and reviewing from the staff input as well, as well as council members, what specific projects they will be. While we have named some specific projects, and I'll just give the example of Murphy Chandler, we have $65,000, but all of that is not yet identified as to exactly what that will be. We do know that we have a bathroom on the sports field sides that we're going to be working with the Sports Association with. In fact, that's a match grant that they're putting money up 50% to match that in order to accelerate. The same thing's going on in Briarwood Park, but the remainder of the money, again, example for Murphy Chandler, has not yet been decided, so we're still interested to hear from the public. We encourage those that use Murphy Chandler Park to give us, you know, your ideas, your wish lists. We'd love to see it, and we'd like to have it as soon as possible, because we do want to allocate these funds so we can get these projects started and see dirt moving and the work implemented.
So you're saying there are additional funds available, or there are just funds within that park that are available?
Within that park. For the example, the $65,000 from Murphy Chandler, we have identified one project already, very identical to what we're doing in Briarwood Park. It's a bathroom improvement where we had a volunteer group come in and be able to put money up 50% of the funding for that bathroom, both in Briarwood and in Murphy Chandler. But the remainder of the funds were, and that's $25,000 that we're looking at the Murphy Chandler, because it's a men's and women's restroom. So the remainder of those funds have not yet been identified as to where they will go in Murphy Chandler, so we would like the input from the community.
I have some questions about, from a number of constituents, about the criteria for selecting these. They saw that there was somewhat of a discrepancy and an uneven distribution between the parts, and just wondering what criteria was used and how we came up with the numbers that were applied to the, to the various parks.
Well, the criteria basically was, we have five elected officials, and we took the funds, I think it was about $215,000, somewhere in that number. First we started at, I think it was $225,000, actually, and we divided that among the council members. The mayor did receive a higher allocation, because the ability was there for him to be able to spread his dollars out throughout the districts and to look for opportunities where he could cost share on a project that each of you may come up with, that you may be short on the funds, and he could use his funds as well. So, we have identified a number of projects within all four districts, and then, of course, the city at large, but I think it's important to note two things. One, while we have identified a few projects specifically where citizens have come in and said that we'd like to match funds to make this improvement happen, we have done that, and there are still funds that are left over. And remember, too, we talked about, my goodness, I guess maybe in three previous meetings before, as we were preparing for the budget, that if your dollars were allowed to be spread further, and we found that the improvements that were identified to fund, if there was money left over, it would stay within your district, and you could find another project, whether it's in that same park or spread that to another park. And again, it was encouraged that if anyone, if any of you had leftover money, that you may want to pool that money and find a project where maybe you're saddling your district lines, or where, you know, there might be an improvement that's for the greater good. So, that's the explanation of it. And again, the whole purpose of it was, was to demonstrate the excitement of the funds that we had available as we're nearing the end of your first fiscal year as a city, and to be able to give that money back to the community, to have some visible impact of improvements, and especially in the arena of parks where your community was very loud and clear that they wanted to see park improvements, as they did want to see public safety improvements in the city.
Yeah, and I don't know that the term discrepancies is a proper term in this instance, because, you know, some, not all parks are the same size. Some parks are passive, some parks are, you know, active, some have rec centers, some don't. Especially for the passive, smaller parks, you know, I think we tried to get money to every park for this one little special December grant program, but in our 2014 budget, once we had more projects from people, identified products, like you had the one identified project in Briarwood Park, and Murphy Chandler had the bathroom identified, and other, couple projects were identified. We really want these parks groups, and some of those will come out of the comp, of the partners, master plan, we want people to identify things that are important to their parks. We have, I have to look at the city as a whole, and then the district representatives can really push the projects in there for their constituents, but in, I just think it's, it was a great, it's a great thing to be able to have done this in December, but next year, the budget will be a lot larger, obviously, for our parks, and we'll have more time for folks to get us issues that they'd like addressed in their area parks. So, it's a, I'm excited about it. Just tell everybody to hold tight, because we got some things coming, and it's going to, and we need your input.
Exactly, and we also have $2 million allocated in the 2014 budget, specifically, exclusively for parks, and we'll be able to use those funds to create a capital improvement program. And Mayor, if I could just make mention of just terminology, because we had a great question that came from a citizen this week, visiting you during your Mondays with the mayor, and the question was, why are we calling it a grant, and, you know, isn't it an award, or is it an allocation, or what is that? And the reason that we're using the term grant is because it's a one-time expense, and so it's not an allocation, or it's not a budgeted item that, you know, can be expected. And that's why I've said every time we've discussed this, it is my hope that we will do this on an annual basis, but the grant is for a one-time expense for a particular purpose.
And of course, we, District Four, about parks, we want to try to remedy that situation this year as well.
We're going to have to figure out a way, how to accrue this, how to accrue this kind of money, all right?
Exactly.
And I'm sure what we don't get now, it'll be ripping down the road.
Right. And just for Mr. Gabia's point, in the 2014 budget, we do have, while we have $2 million for parks and park improvements, we also have for District Four, $100,000 for the purpose of purchasing what we think will be a pocket park and the improvements thereof. So, we want to look forward to having a first park in District Four, and it'll be a first step, what we hope will be many.
For those who are not really aware of what we're talking about, the city was built largely around the interest in park and park development, so we have no parks in the fourth district. So, we have this little tit for tat here, where when we do monies, I want some accrued for future use in the fourth district.
And we want to do it, we want to...
I know you do, and I know you'll be there when I need you.
You may have the largest park in the future.
Hopefully, we'll have an announcement down next year. I have a question for Marie, please.
Yes.
And it's in reference to IGAs.
Yes.
If you could, for clarification purposes, if you could let us make the statement on which IGAs we've currently approved, if you know the amounts, clarify it, and then which may be pending, and where is the count, where it is accounted for on the budget?
Okay, I'm probably going to tag team with our city attorney, but I'll travel on memory right now. We did have an IGA for public safety, and we no longer do, because we now have a police department.
Right.
We did have an IGA for Parks and Recreation, the operation of Parks and Recreation. We no longer are operating under that, because we are operating the parks now. We don't yet own them, but we are operating the parks as if we do own them, and we are moving forward, and the city attorney is working with the county attorney's staff to work on purchasing those parks, so we expect that to be in a very near future council meeting someday.
And both of those situations were resolved successfully, and most, most probably because of the collaborative effort that we've had with Decap County under the new interim CEO, Lee May.
Yes, we need to state over and over what a great relationship we are experiencing and we're enjoying with the new CEO.
Yeah, that police IGA changed overnight.
Changed overnight, absolutely, because of him. And, and it did on some other initiatives that hopefully soon I'll be able to announce with you as well. So, exciting times and very professional services that we're enjoying, so I'm very appreciative of that. 911, we have an IGA with the county to perform and provide dispatching services for us under 911. We have animal control. We have fire safety. Now, on fire safety, we are planning, and the city attorney is working through the amendment of fire safety, because we, as you know, are working with the city of Decatur to provide for an IGA with them for fire marshal services.
What is the amount we're paying Decap on the IGA for the fire marshal services? Is that...
We're not paying anything.
Okay.
And it's just, and the funds that they receive are for their review permit fees that they collect themselves.
Okay.
Off of that, so there's, there's no charge to us for that. There were charges on police and Parks and Rec, and we were able to settle on an amount that was agreed upon with both parties, and as a result, we're no longer paying, because we're, we've absorbed those costs ourselves now. Let's see, 911, animal control, water and sewer, the county owns that infrastructure and those utilities, so they are providing, providing and performing those services for us. We have no plans at all to get into the water and sewer business, so we are dependent on them, and they are providing that service for all...
And let's make that clear, we have no plans to get into the water and sewer business, just in case somebody didn't hear that right.
As your city manager, and I'm sure I would get a note passed by the finance officer, we have no funds for that.
That's right.
No room in the budget for that right now.
Sanitation.
Sanitation.
Thank you.
The two that you have passed that the commission hasn't passed relates to the tax collection services and fee collections. While they're performing those, the commission has not approved that IGA, though this council has. And also, the IGA relating to the GIS services has been passed by this council, but has not been passed by the commission. There seems to be perhaps an issue that Decap County may request a payment for past services in connection with the preparation of the maps. In talking with the city manager, she indicated that that's not the case, that they've already worked that out. So, these are things that are, that are ongoing also.
And then sanitation.
Elections.
Yes.
Elections.
That hasn't been passed yet either, has it?
No.
And can you just make a comment on where this is accounted for in the budget?
Well, on elections, it would be under Finance Administration, but, and those are, you know, nominal costs, but we do have those funds covered.
And 911 would be?
911, we're not paying a cost, but we are surrendering all of our landlines and cell phones and what are called burn phones, that fee that is attached to the monthly statements, that is going directly to and received by Decap County.
So if we took over 911, those funds would come to us.
Right, they would come back to us, correct. So, we've surrendered those. So, outside of that, there really is no other...
Sanitation is on the property bill?
Sanitation is on the tax bill.
Fire services from firehouses is...
Right, that's part of the taxes that you all pay to Decap County.
All right, thank you, Marie. Thank you, Joe. So, we closed, the public hearing is not closed yet, buddy, right? Because we had just had testimony, so now we close the public hearing on the budget? Anybody else have anything else? Okay. Yeah, yeah, anybody else in the public have a comment on the budget?
The public hearing is not closed.
Yeah, not yet. Did you get anybody, Daniel? Okay, all right, the public hearing's closed on the budget. Opening remarks, which I, which I got preempted. I'd like to recognize Ms. Nancy Moore from Boneheads, provided us with the meal. You know, we usually go from 4:00 to sometimes 10:00, and there's local Brookhaven restaurateurs come and provide the food from Boneheads, but it's a very fresh, good meal, and we appreciate their making good food for us.
Yeah, just wait so people know who you are if they want to talk to you. Great, thank you.
I'm going to speak.
They're at Town Brookhaven, by the way, I've been there, and it's great. They have a, they sell beer there, that's interesting. Town Hall, just wanted to reiterate, we have a town hall next Monday, right Dana? At Oglethorpe University at 7:30, 7 o'clock, at Lepton Hall. So, any questions you have about anything in the city, please, we want your input to come to the Town Hall meeting. We'll have a few presentations, but we'll have a pretty long public question and answer session, where the rules for engagement are quite relaxed. That's this Monday, coming up Monday, the 16th, at 7:30 PM at Lepton Hall. What's that? Seven, I'm sorry, seven, not 7:30, 7 o'clock. And you should get an email about that. Yeah, exactly, okay. I think that's it, I'll have some more remarks later, but now we're going to the commendations. We have, you see several officers here tonight, usually we don't have this much security, but we do tonight. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to announce our second round of commendations since we've been in service, July 31st of this year. Department's been exceptionally busy, busier than we expected, and with that being said, the teamwork's been unbelievable here from anywhere I've ever worked before. So with that to help me out, I'd like to get Deputy Chief Ron Freeman up here, and I think you all know Lieutenant Juan Bruan and Lieutenant Brandon Gurley, which have done an exceptional job, work with everyone, and it's not to say the combinations we're giving today are the only ones deserved. I mean, a number of the officers have been doing an exceptional job, passing on information, relaying information, making great, great arrests, and hopefully making the community a lot safer. That being said, we have a number of them today that actually took place this past November, and we'll start out by date. First, the first commendations go to Officer Vic Dankovich, Detective Russell Davis, and our crime scene technician, Dave Walter. On November 14th, Officer Dankovich stopped a car real early morning hours with a cover tag in the area Ashford Dunwoody and West Nancy Creek. He was talking to the driver, spotted a flat screen TV in the back, and he ended up just talking to the driver. About that time, another officer responded to an alarm call that was received in the area Johnson Ferry Road. He found a burglar, it actually took place there in early morning hours, found a window broken and a flat screen TV taken off a wall. So with that being said, Officer Dankovich actually ended up finding the burglar and the property before it was actually reported. So with that, it was an exceptional job. Detective Russell Davis and the crime scene technician, Dave Walter, were called out to the scene, and they actually did a great job. Officer, or Detective Russell Davis actually got a confession out of the suspect that we had, and the crime scene tech, Dave Walter, actually matched up some of the tool impressions. So, I mean, it was great teamwork, and they did a great job. So with that, I'd like to...
Bring them up.
Give them some commendations. You guys come on up. Want us to do all of them, we get everyone all together then?
Sure.
Second combination we'd like to give is, this was an accident where two officers responded, and it was in the area Lennox Park Boulevard, and this took place on November 21st. Both officers responded. Vehicle involved in the accident was actually kind of teetering over a pretty high embankment wall. One of the officers got out of his car, actually had to put his weight on the back of the vehicle, because the car was ready to tip over. He held the car... Anyway, he was able to hold the car, the other officer actually went into the car. They found out that a female, an elderly female, actually had a stroke or some kind of medical problem. They were able to get her out, get an ambulance, and basically saved the day, so they went above and beyond their, their call for duty on that one, put themselves in danger too doing that. So, with that, that's Officer Joseph King and Officer Howard Millard. in danger too doing that. So with that, that's Officer Joseph King and Officer Howard Millard. Still don't understand why you didn't pick the car up. Okay, our third commendation goes to Sergeant Chris Shelton, who is actually on vacation, Sergeant Tyrone Oliver from CID, and Investigator Tom Martin from CID. This took place on November 28th. Prior to this, if you read the statistics that were recently passed out, we've had an extremely high number of armed robberies that took place on the Beaufort Highway area. Actually, the one that, we got a vehicle description, took place just prior to our last council meeting. When we were here, I stopped by. It was on Beaufort Highway near the Kroger store where the car wash is at. A male and a female were robbed by two suspects. We were able to get the car description, actually video of the car. And two days later, actually on Thanksgiving evening, Sergeant Shelton actually saw a vehicle matching the description with two of the suspects in it that matched the description. He watched them for a little while. They were following a group of Hispanic people in the apartment complex area, which were primary victims. And he ended up chasing them for a little bit. They ran out of the car. He was able to set up a perimeter, got other officers involved. The other officers on the shift were able to apprehend them. And Sergeant Tyrone Oliver and Tom Martin were called in, and through their interrogations and follow-ups and everything, they were able to clear up at least seven of our armed robberies with these same suspects. They're from Clayton County and Fulton County. These guys came after the fact. So that, we appreciate everyone, all the equipment that we've received to help us out in doing our job. And we're still getting some in, but these guys have been doing a phenomenal job, and the teamwork involved is unbelievable. So with that, thank you.
I want to say to you folks, all thanks to the police department. We get calls and emails and texts, and people grab us by the arm every day in parking lots and grocery stores, thanking us for our police. And, you know, it's embarrassing because most people, that's all they want to talk about, how great the police are. They're always seeing you. They respond quickly. They help me when they didn't really have to help me. So it's really a testament to Marie Fund and the chief, and the chief and the deputy chief, and all the leadership for getting y'all in place and choosing you to be Brookhaven's first police department. And you're doing a wonderful job, and sincerely, you're making us all look good, and you're putting your life on the line to do that. But you're, more importantly, you're providing a safe community and a safe community. I know it's only going to get better from here. So thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I hope the accolades keep on up, because I don't know if you noticed tonight, but it was the first night we're deploying our lasers. So everybody better obey the speed limits. I believe six? Are we at?
Agenda announcements, thank you again. Marie?
Oh, we have no agenda announcements.
No agenda, okay. Public comment? Yes, my mic is on, yes.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jed Beardsley, 1081 Hunters Brook Court, City of Brookhaven. Do you all realize what December 10th, 2012, held for us? I think we need to remember that, I think it was exactly a year ago that you all were sworn in, the exception of Bates who couldn't make it. He was the first one sworn in. But December 10th was the ceremony when everybody was sworn in. So these fine public servants have been in office for exactly a year. Congratulations on that. I also wanted to congratulate you on the hard work of Marie and others to finally come up with the city offices and the police station facilities, as you know, a topic close to my heart. But as far as this anniversary goes, it was also a day I breathed a big sigh of relief when my duties as governor's commission member ended, and we handed it off to you. So that was a big day for me, too. But congratulations on the finding the off space. I know it was very, very hard, because, you know, the spaces you wound up with weren't even available, weren't even on the radar of my committee and the governor's commission. They weren't there. With the GSU building, said, "Go away, we don't have any space." So their programs changed, and congratulations to Marie and on to fabulous job and a great location. I don't know much about the police facility, but I'm sure it'll be first rate. And the only other thing I wanted to say was, maybe I'm in the silent minority, but you all, you know, have done some public policy work that's highly commendable. You know, there's a particular lawsuit that involves a nightclub that we don't talk about, but you've made public policy decisions that were important for the city. And I want to publicly tell you that there are citizens who understand that those are difficult decisions, but they were good decisions, and you're sticking by your guns on that policy you set. And I think that's really important, and I wanted to commend you all personally for the road you chose on that. And, you know, keep it up, because we don't need five or six nightclubs of that variety proliferating in our city. And people need to understand, that's why you took that policy. And it's not easy, and there's been some publicity that hasn't been maybe your favorite time in the spotlight, but you did a good thing, and keep up the good work on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jed.
Clayton Connerow?
Connerow?
Clayton Connerow.
Right. Not like Bonnaroo, it's Connerow.
Park Creek Lane, Mayor, Council, thank you. All of you all know me, and you're familiar with what I want to talk about. So I'm gonna, with your permission, turn to the side and face the crowd. I'm a member of what we call the Friends of Brookhaven Foundation, and our goal is to work with the city, to enhance life in the city, enhance the quality of life. One of the best ways to do that is by preventing the premature end to life. So to that end, our first project is to raise money to purchase an automated external defibrillator to put in each of the police cars. The city's gonna match us on that. They're expensive, but not compared to the cost of losing a life. I'm hoping that sometime in the near future, there can be some commendations about an officer who saved a life, either at the grocery store parking lot or after an accident. Already in the city of Shamlee and Dunwoodie, six lives have been saved over the past couple of years. And just two weeks ago, in Marietta, a life was saved by a police officer with an automated external defibrillator. We have a website set up. There's some cards on the table back there. Like I said, they're kind of expensive. They're $1,000 each. The city is matching our fundraising efforts. We've had some businesses and citizens that have been very generous, but we're not to our goal of getting one for each of the police cars and the two police bicycles that I've heard about, plus court and city hall. So if you feel like that that's not your obligation to make a contribution, please let us know which district you live in, and we'll make sure that the cars that patrol in your neighborhood are one of the ones without. Anyway, it's a great project, and we are nonpartisan, nonprofit. We're not taking sides on any other controversies, and we're just trying to help the police have the equipment that they need to save lives. So please pick up one of these cards, go to our website, read about it in the reporter, the patch, and the other places. Thank you.
How close are you all, Clayton, to your goal? You getting there? Getting close?
We're getting pretty close, but again, I'm not sure which neighborhood's not gonna have one. We're very close. We've got some verbal commitments that haven't delivered yet, but I'm sure that they will. So, and it's not the end of our fundraising. There are other things that we can do to help out. And so please go to our website, and even if it's $100, $50, it all helps. Thank you.
Clayton, point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask a clarification question?
Yes.
Clayton, I don't believe I understand, understood what the real goal was dollar-wise?
$64,000.
And the city is matching half of that?
Actually, a little bit more than that. So we're trying to raise half of that through citizen and business donations, and the city's gonna match it.
Thirty-some-odd thousand dollars?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, we, you know, with Tom Curry coming on board as our city attorney, we're trying to make sure that we are following procedures when it comes to public hearings and our meetings. And just a slight amendment to the way we handle our public hearings. I know in the past, you've seen us where we haven't been able to interact at all with the citizens at the podium. We still can't interact too much, but we can, you'll notice what Clayton, I mean, what, what's his name down there? Joe. Joe just did, was a clarifying question. So from this point forward, you'll see your city council, if there's a question that they have about something you've said that's a clarifying point, not a back-and-forth exchange, but a clarifying point, the council will be able to ask you those questions to clarify something you may have said. So I think that's a good improvement for the way we've done things, and they'll still want to make sure we don't get into a back-and-forth exchange, because that kind of limits the business of the council. But just hope you understand that you'll be getting some clarifying questions, and we don't want to expand it beyond that, but we want to be able to interact in that small way, at least with our citizens. So that's sort of a newer policy.
Hello?
Hello.
I don't know if this is something that can be accomplished, but I would like to request that my comment on the November 26 regular council meeting minutes be rewarded a little bit differently. It sounds like I stood up here and said I spread rumors around the community in the way it's written. I don't know if I can request that, but I would like it to be changed to closer to what was actually said.
I guess we, do you know anything about how we could do that? Or is there a video? I guess we could review the video.
You have already approved.
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't approved the minutes, okay. So they can be changed and amended prior to approval to reflect?
Would have to have the language that would need to be changed, correct?
The city clerk can go back in, and if we even need to capture that verbatim, we could do that. So you could direct staff, if you so desire to move, to adopt the minutes to.
So clarifying question for Terrell. Is there a point, what portion of the meeting was that? Was that the first or second public hearing, or the public comment, or?
I think it's the second, second public. And if I could direct staff to speak with Terrell, so that we work together to make sure that the context of what she was trying to get across is committed in those meeting minutes.
Or do you have something that's marked up now, or just a?
No, I don't.
You can, okay.
There should be a verbatim record of this, so.
We'll take care of that, for sure.
Do we just defer that portion of it, that those sets of minutes?
I think you can direct staff to correct, amend that portion of the minutes to reflect verbatim what was said.
All right, thank you.
And we'll make sure that we get with Terrell, so we're capturing exactly where she was concerned.
All right, thank you. Great. Next, Daniel?
Morning, Mayor.
Morning, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor and Council, last time I got scolded because I didn't respect. All right, well, have to earn respect, but I do respect all y'all. Thank you. I've got this nice little newsletter here, very pretty, looks exciting, but it's like, it's communistic. It only says the good stuff, what y'all wanted to say. You're not telling the neighbors about how you sold out Ashford Park. You sold us out, guys. It's not pretty. I'm not happy. And I guess I'm acting president of the Neighborhood Association. You came over last week, Mr. Mayor, you didn't even ask to see me or meet with me. You met with some of the neighbors. And then the next day, removed the red tag. There's other houses on other streets, you know, y'all's excuse was this was R-75, R-100, and then this is R-85, one street over, same house problem. There's R-75 on each side. It smells of dirty rat. If y'all gonna have a time capsule, I really appreciate getting a family portrait of everybody who screwed up my neighborhood. And you want us to sue y'all, y'all ought to be responsible for us. And put on all your big boy and big girl pants and take care of your neighborhoods that you came house to house wanting our vote, and we voted, we finally voted for you, and you sold us out. This time capsule needs to have a picture of all y'all and an article of how you sold out Ashford Park, Ashford Road, and how you treated all of us. I'm not happy still. And this is gonna cause, when everybody comes up for reelection, people gonna think very hard who they vote for next time. Thank you.
Next? Mr. Fisher?
Good evening. Todd Fisher. This also is in regard to 2802 Ashford Road. On November 26th, at the last council meeting, I wasn't able to attend. I was out of town on holiday. But there was a number of other neighbors here voicing their concerns about 2802. And my understanding is that from that meeting, they were told that they were gonna be communicated with on updates, you know, the status of that project and the issues that are going on there. So that all sounded good. And then that weekend, I believe Sunday, the mayor was around the neighborhood and was visiting with Todd Verino, the next door. I live across the street. And then the very next day, which was Monday, the 2nd, the stop work order was lifted on that project. And I had just come back into town Tuesday morning, the 3rd, workers were there bright and early working. So I'm just wondering, what happened to the communication that we said, that you guys said that we were gonna receive about that? Because as far as I know, everybody, all of our neighbors were very surprised that that stop work order was lifted. So what happened? That's just, you know, I know you guys can't, we can't have a back-and-forth now, but maybe at the town hall meeting on Monday, we can have a better discussion about it then.
Thank you. I can ask Susan a clarifying question about this. Susan, did community development order that work stop order to be removed?
Yes, I did.
Did you seek permission, or was there a requirement, or would it be proper for you to seek a permission from the mayor or anybody in the council?
I did not seek permission from the council. I did not advise the mayor or council.
Why did you not seek permission?
It's not, it's a decision by staff. It's not a decision by council.
Why, how, why is that?
The particular property and the setback requirement was found to be compliant. Therefore, as the community development director, I'm charged with making that decision, and therefore I lifted the stop work order.
So the charter that we have, the form of government we have, leaves that decision to your discretion?
Yes, sir.
And we cannot interfere with that decision?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Were you also following city codes, laws?
I was following city codes and also advice of council, legal council, not city council.
So you were doing what was legally required?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we do follow the law?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next?
Mayor?
Mr. Malloy?
Hello? Obviously disappointed with the decision at 2802.
Obviously disappointed with the decision of 2802, 2808. Just disappointed that the city sided with a builder as opposed to the citizens, especially when signing a permit, it states on there that the builder is responsible for anything that takes place. I've also had some communication, or we have had some communication regarding some other properties in the Ashford Park area, specifically 1569 Trentwood and 1854 Ninth Street. And that happened in late October, early November, and yet again, nothing is taking place with those properties, nor has any communication come back our way. Obviously, it's something that doesn't sit very well with us. I do like the idea of a task force being implemented. I question the group who is originally or initially assigned to this task force. I just think that it's a lot of the same people who are involved in the current situation, and shouldn't we be seeking a third party or somebody else who has, you know, not an interest at stake, per se? I also request that the ordinance for the building height and the threshold requirement be brought back into discussion, specifically around the threshold height. I'm not opposed to continuing with or leaving the height as it is, but I think we need to talk about the threshold. Essentially, it allows for a drive-under garage to be put in my neighborhood, and I'm really opposed to something like that. Again, I just wanna restate the importance of average setback and sort of where this has gotten us to date. And I think all of you've put a lot of time in on this and appreciate what's taking place. Again, I'm not opposed to reworking some of the language here, make some things clearer, but I think it goes to show with our older neighborhoods, we really need to have something in place here, not end up with what we have right now. In addition, I did wanna comment on not increasing the administrative variance from ten percent to twenty-five percent, a hundred and fifty percent increase, when at this point, we need a little bit more proof that we have things under control. And as I mentioned before, with the Trentwood property and the Ninth Street property, until we get some proof that this is being taken care of, it's, I just don't think it's a good idea at this time. Lastly, I thought it'd be kinda fun to bring up my flyer from Brookhaven Yes. And on the back here, it shows the five things that we care about, which are police parks, code enforcement, roads, and zoning. And I'm having a really tough time with our code enforcement and our zoning piece of this, given all the stuff I've not only presented to you guys, but the recent decisions that have taken place. And hopefully, you'll be satisfied with your decision as things continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Marie, on the, and Jim, I guess, too, on the task force, problematic to involve a third party or a citizen or whatnot on that task force, or is that something that y'all would? Do you have any comment on that, Jim, or no?
I think initially, we need to sort of get our mind wrapped around what the process is, let's establish that we, you know, I don't have a problem introducing, you know, additional parties, but I wanna sort of make sure that we can use them most efficiently, and I'm not trying to sort of guide the direction. I just, you know, with initial discussions, I think we need to do some fact-finding, and then...
Revisit it in about a month or so?
Yeah, well, see how best we move forward and what, you know, we're not exactly sure right now what direction or what pieces and parts we need to, or what holes we need to fill. So, let's try to figure out what that is, and then see who the best people are to bring in to help fill those holes.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Picking up on that same theme with outside participants, Mr. Mayor? Marie, would it not be a good idea, too, if and when we review the threshold and height, bring in members from the community, especially in the construction business, let them be a part of this?
We could certainly do that. When we amended the zoning ordinance for that purpose, we did have a public hearing, and we did receive quite a bit of input regarding that. We certainly can invite the public to make additional comments if they'd like, but unless the council so directs to reconsider their decision on that, really, the matter has been closed.
I think that maybe an amendment to that, or just a discussion on it, 'cause, you know, I think we did a good thing by changing that section, but there could be some things we could address when it comes to the threshold, keep somebody from building up their lot twenty feet.
Well, exactly, yeah, right.
But, well, we can...
Do you want us to bring that back on a January work session?
I'd just like to get some language or some...
Okay, yes, we can look at that.
To see what, just explore it, and then we can put it on the agenda if it's something feasible.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of clarification. I'd like to ask our city attorney, for the purposes of clarifying for the public, some of the context and background of this case that's been discussed by public comments. When we created, when the city of Brookhaven was created, and we adopted a zoning map, at that time, were we bound parcel by parcel to the zonings that we applied at that date when we created the city?
By adopting the map, that's what was adopted, and therefore, that is what was required to be followed.
Is it a sellout to follow the law?
Is it what?
A sellout to follow the law?
No, it's not. No.
But...
And I've given you, I've given you that opinion. If the map was incorrect, which is what your audit's gonna try to determine, then that's unfortunate. However, that's what you adopted.
And a follow-up question is that the ordinance that we had on the books with regard to setback averaging, was that, was the interpretation of that law and its application for this property in any way influenced by the city council?
Not at all. It was purely an interpretation that was made by the community director and me, associated with what was taking place. It was examined very closely. At first, I looked for ways to argue that it did apply, but there was no really any valid argument to say that it did. So, as a result of that, the permit was issued, and it was a valid permit at the time that it was issued.
So, from today forward, the options before this council, Mayor, are what, to bring the ordinance back up for discussion, to look at ways to beef up the intent of the ordinance to protect the neighbors on this zoning issue? Or two, also to investigate the zoning map that we adopted for incorrect data?
Well, and this may be too long of an answer for you. You function as a legislative body, and you are the ones that are making policy. You are limited by virtue of your actions that you have the right to hire a city attorney. You have the right to hire a lawyer. You have the right to appoint certain people to commissions. But your real rights relate to what you do with respect to your ordinances and the legislative effect of that. And so, to answer your question, yes. As you go through your comprehensive plan, as you go through the rewrite of the zoning ordinance, and you get the input of builders, the public, and everything that's associated with that, and audit the map to, so that the map is consistent with what your zoning districts are, then all of that would be subject to a public hearing and your approval or disapproval.
So, in our form of government, and just to American jurisprudence, typically legislative is not, does not direct enforcement of the laws it enacts, correct?
You could, that's correct. The executive is the one who is the person who is responsible for the enforcement of the laws, the interpretation of those laws with the assistance of council in doing that, and the implementation of the ordinances, as well as the implementation of the budget that you all approve. You could take your position, and you could say the citizens of Brookhaven are comparable to shareholders of a corporation, and you are the board of directors, which in turn elects the executive.
Right.
Can you, to the extent you feel appropriate, describe a little bit of the sort of behind-the-scenes? You know, there's been a lot of public things going on with regard to 2802. Can you talk about some of the discussions we had with the, or it may not be appropriate, but trying to see if there are, sort of filling the gaps with some of the things that we've done in addition to just trying to figure out if there was an ordinance solution to the problem?
Well, when the situation took place and it came about, it was assumed that the permit was issued without, and that the setback averaging applied. That was readily admitted. So, the first thing that I did was to put the contractor on notice, who made those decisions relating to the issuance of the permit on behalf of the city, and also on the inspections in itself, for the purpose that if there was a loss, then there would be somebody with whom the city could claim damages and contractually so. As we went in to investigate the situation and began to look at it further, and looked at the map, and saw that there was this zoning classification that was different, then the discussions were, well, what do we do? The question that came about was, is this a matter for the zoning board of appeals? I think initially, we felt that it was, before there was a determination with regard to the issue of the setback, because we were still, at that point in time, really not aware that there was another zoning thing that was there, another zoning classification. So, and the feeling was that that was a, you know, not a good idea to put that on the zoning board of appeals, but the property owner had that right to do that, and that's how the property owner perceived. Then, as we continued to talk about it as a council, and then came to you and said, there is an issue here as it relates to the zoning, as it relates to the average setback, because it contemplates under the statute that it's on the same side of the street. The lots have to be seventy-five feet within each other, and they contemplate them being the same zoning district. In this case, the two lots that were seventy-five feet apart from each other were in different zoning districts. So, as a result, there's not an ability to average one. We reviewed case law. We researched the issue very heavily, and came to the conclusion and the opinion that the setback averaging didn't apply by virtue of the zoning map that was adopted by this council last January, that therefore, the permit was properly issued, should have been, and there should have not been a stop-work order. And therefore, based on my opinion and my discussion with staff, without any discussion with you all, other than telling you that I was going to recommend that the stop-work order be lifted, which I did. It was, it came to the decision of the staff to determine when to issue, when to lift that stop-work order. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but it certainly would not have been advisable to lift it any time prior to the holidays, given the fact that the city was going to be closed, and the city manager recommended to please wait. And so, that was made in order to wait until that Monday, following Thanksgiving, so the city would be there in order to field the questions that were gonna take place associated with that.
And I think what Jim was getting at was, I know you can't disclose settlement negotiations, but can you confirm or deny that there were settlement negotiations engaged with the parties on the other end of this? And if you don't wanna answer that question?
I'm not, I'm not in a position to answer that question.
That's acceptable. All right. All right. I think that's...
Well, I guess if you wanna take it one step further for a point of clarification, you know, the bottom line is here, we have a lot of residents that are really upset. And it was a culmination of situations. So, the only other thing we could do at this point as council is look back on this now and say, what happened? What are we doing about it? Look at the current situation. What can we do to limit what potentially is still out there? And if I'm not mistaken, and a clarification point here, if you, Marie or Susan, what have we done as a city to help protect ourselves from this and our citizens from being exposed to this type of result?
Well, our first order of business is to confirm the zoning map. I mean, that's important. There are over fourteen thousand parcels in the city. The community has brought to our attention that the map is in error, even though that's the map that we entrusted to be true and correct as we received it from the county as being the zoning of all parcels in the city of Brookhaven. So, what we're moving towards is an audit of not just all of the parcels, but to capture all conditions that may have been assigned by the county to all properties that were rezoned or varied in some way. To further capture any more additional information, we're also looking at all subdivision plats that were recorded for properties within the city of Brookhaven to see if, at the time of approval of the plat, if there are any conditions that were writing on the plat and the recording of it. We have also reached out to a consulting firm to provide us a proposal whereby they could bring a team in that would do that exercise, so that they would be able to focus a hundred percent of their attention to that instead of the staff, for a couple of reasons. One, we didn't want to interrupt the operations of the department and be able to work with the public on permitting requests. And we wanted a different set of fresh eyes outside of the staffs to review all of that. So, we are, we have received a proposal, and we are reviewing it and getting back with the company that submitted that. Further, just this evening, I've been given yet another contact of another firm that specifically, excuse me, focuses on zoning and land use. And so, we're gonna be, I'll be reaching out to that person first thing tomorrow morning to discuss what our needs are and to request a proposal from them. Third, one of our own council members spent a number of hours just this morning down at DeKalb County in the planning department, and was able to learn of more information that had not been transmitted to us in our early days of incorporation. So, we're anxious to get that information and look at that to compare it with not only what our current zoning map is, but to overlay their information through a CAD system on our own GIS. So, we'll be doing that. We expect to have a decision, I would say, by the end of this week as to who we're going to engage to help us do what we're calling the zoning map audit and all conditions that have been assigned to properties in the city of Brookhaven.
When we get that zoning map audited, and we find the things we need to correct, and we correct them, then we need to readopt that zoning map?
We will have to. We'll have to follow Zoning Procedures Act, because as the city attorney said, we have adopted a map. Right or wrong, good or bad, we have adopted a map. And again, this is a map that we entrusted from DeKalb County as being true and accurate. So, if we do find those discrepancies, and if the citizens themselves have written information that states that their property is zoned X, Y, or Z, we would really encourage them to share that with us, so we can have that as well. Now, once we determine what the zonings are and any discrepancies, we'll have to follow the Zoning Procedures Act. The map will be advertised for amendment, and it will go before the planning commission for a public hearing and a recommendation, and then come back before the mayor and council for yet another public hearing and for consideration of readoption.
And I know our direction to you and to staff when we were meeting about what procedures and policy the city should have going forward. You know, the auditing of the map and the task force with Councilman R. U. and Ms. Cannon was to review the policies and procedures from when you're at the window to all the way to the back, to make sure that we have everything covered, because as, you know, a city that's less than a year old, we knew we were gonna have hiccups, and this is probably the hiccup that we're, you know, you don't ever foresee this type of thing, and this is a hiccup we're having. But we're gonna get it correct, are we not?
Oh, absolutely.
We're gonna have procedures in place that make sure that we have enough staff to inspect staking of lots and new lots, and inspect setbacks when the footings are poured, and to make sure that all of our zoning procedures and all of our ordinances are followed to the letter, so that we don't have these types of issues in the future. So, going forward, after we get this review done and we get the task force findings, it's, you know, was it not our direction that we get this correct and that we have a procedure that's as infallible as possible?
Absolutely, and that procedure is from receiving the permit application at the window to having that travel through the department and then turning that around to... to issuing a permit. So, all of that is going to be reviewed, and even the types of inspections and when the inspections occur, and one inspection must occur first at a minimum, we're looking at staking and stringing all setbacks before even a foundation inspection can be made.
And we've talked about even going so far, one of the things that was thrown off, that I was thinking about, was having possible auxiliary citizen representatives kind of assist in that task, when the staking and the footing things are, the footings are poured. We haven't come up with a procedure for that, is that not one of the things we also discussed?
That is something we are exploring, and to look at that, we want to be sure that if that is an avenue that we travel on, we want to be sure that those that are doing that are qualified to do it and know exactly what it is that they're doing, because we do have a responsibility there to ensure that, especially with this new procedure, that, you know, we are checking off on that, and we are entitling the property to move forward in its construction process.
All right. Thank you.
Quick question, just curious, on the January 15th, was the map available for the mayor and the council to look at during the approval?
Yes.
It was?
It was.
And it was the same map that we see today, the GIS map?
The map that we have today.
Mr. Malloy, I'm going to have to...
Let me just answer that, yes, can I confirm that?
Great, thank you very much.
All right. All right. Dan, anybody else?
Carl Myers.
Mr. Myers.
How are you all doing, Mr. Mayor, Council? I want to talk to you about the task force, I think it's a great idea. I am concerned with who's on it. I like the idea of another set of eyes that Marie's talking about on the zoning map audit. So, if we could consider a third party to help us with our processes in auditing permits that are already out there, it might be a good idea, because we've kind of really botched it at this point. I think it's been, it's, from what I've seen, from the site plans that I reviewed, there's questionable oversight that I see. And I don't, I don't know, I don't claim to know everything, but I just look at them for a short time, and it's questionable. I think what'd be super helpful, I think you guys are working on a checklist for site plan reviewers, but not only for the site plan reviewer, for surveyors, builders to have when they come in to fill out a permit. I'm not sure if you currently have one, I just, I hear you're working on one. Maybe going to another municipality and just getting their checklist, start with that. It's very important. I talked to a surveyor yesterday about some of the stuff going on here in Brookhaven, and his comment to me was that average setback is not a policy in Brookhaven. That's what he, that's how he's submitting his surveys right now. And I was like, you better be careful on who's telling you that. I don't know what builder's filling them in on that information, but there's surveyors running site plans not accounting for that. If a checklist is handed to the builder at the point of application, here's what you need to follow. It's that simple. And in that checklist, the builder relays to the surveyor. A lot of mistakes will be avoided. And not only that, the site plan reviewer has the same checklist, and he just goes right down it. Got it, got it, got it. That's the best way to make this right. It works in other places. Obviously, from what I'm seeing in all the site plans that I've reviewed, that y'all have out there right now, there's major inconsistencies, major. Stuff missing, zoning on left and right, that's missing on Ashford Road, original site plan, by the way. There is no zoning on 2808, and no one on the other side. And that's our whole problem we're talking about. It wasn't on the original site plan. 1569 Trentwood doesn't have anything about average setback on it as well, and that's another problem that's out there. Last thing is the threshold. I like the idea of a roundtable, build a roundtable, to talk about stuff like threshold, average setback, how we can make the ordinances better, clearer to follow, more fair. So, that's all. Thanks.
Susan, do we have, do we give a checklist to the permit applicant as well? I know that we have checklists. Is that something, if we don't have, are we...
We do have a checklist in the packet, it's also on the website, and part of our team meeting on the 20th is to go over everything from A to Z. And we actually had that checklist refined from the outside company that we brought in, and we'll be supplying that all to the council. My plan is to hopefully get that to you by tomorrow, so you can see everything that we've put together.
The comment was specifically directed towards a checklist for surveyors. Is that part of the checklist?
It would be a checklist that would, like he indicated, it should be the same checklist that everyone would use. If you're going to search for certain requirements, those requirements should be on the checklist, so it should be a consistent checklist for anyone who is seeking the permit.
I would also like for Jim and Susan and Marie on the task force, that at some point in the next, I mean, maybe right before Christmas or New Year's, that, I know y'all are going to have meetings, but if you could have a, I know you said a builder's roundtable, I know we're going to have another builder's one, but maybe pick five or six builders or developers, some of the folks who've been speaking, and have a meeting with them specifically as well. If that's something that you would consider, I would appreciate y'all doing that. Does that sound reasonable?
Sure, sounds like a great idea.
Right.
We welcome feedback, we can't make it better if we don't have feedback.
All right. Thank you, Susan. All right, Dan, any more comments?
Todd Farina.
Hello.
Mayor, Council. Unfortunate to see you all here again, but I guess we'll just get used to it. I got to say, I was extremely disappointed when I saw the letter that you guys wrote, and the opinion that you took and the position that you took on it. It really shows, in my opinion, a lack of courage to do the right thing, which we'll get right back to that leadership issue. I really thought this was a public forum, to hear from the public, not an opportunity for the council to defend their position. I think you basically just helped us even more. The spider web of tactics that you used to even get to that opinion, I can almost say very confidently that that's not what the builder had in mind when he was submitting the permit, but you found a way to find that loophole and make it happen. And you've hidden behind the legal, the legal piece of this, and I'm not going to call it, as others may have said, as a sellout, but I can say for a lot of people in the city of Ashford, or on Ashford Road, and in the District of Ashford Park, really do feel like you guys let us down. The people that voted for this city, that thought we were going to get more code enforcement, thought we were going to have more control over this, it didn't happen. And your letter, I love the letter, it's great, does us a really good favor. I appreciate you writing it, I appreciate you guys even taking the opportunity to explain it even further, because it just shows the level of respect that you have for the citizens of Ashford Road. And, you know, something needs to be done. I'm the property owner next door to 2802. We take the brunt of this issue, and you just say, oops, sorry, wash your hands, nothing happens. What's going to happen? What happens to us? The house stays, people stay in place, competency, we put a task force in place that basically is the same members who made it, let it happen to begin with. It's like putting the fox in the hen house. I like the idea of considering a third party, we'll see where that goes, but in the meantime, everything you guys are doing, I oppose. In fact, you should stop. You should stop all permitting until you get this under control. I oppose 2808, sorry, the 2802, what's going on there, the height recommendation, or the height, the elevation that you looked at, that needs to be looked at. I oppose the administrative authority to 25%, that is insane. That is insane. How can you even propose that right now? I'm not going to say what somebody else said, but I think he hit right to the heart of calling you what you did, but we're not going to name call, but I would say, there's a lack of courage to do the right thing on this council, and the citizens of Ashford Road really felt like you let us down. You let us down, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Daniel?
Gary Schneberg. Good evening, I'm Gary Schneberg at 2707 Ashford Road, I've lived there again for about 22 years. First off, I'd like to recommend that you start this meeting at 7:30, so, because the meetings that I've been to, they all start at 7:20, 7:15, I think tonight started at 7:23, so if the audience was here at 7:30, we'd be here after your workshop, so please take that in the recommendation that you start this meeting on time. The other thing is, 2708 Ashford Road, we're 2808. This is Ashford Road right here, this is Todd's house, Maxine's house, and here's the new house. So, I just want you to, if you have not seen it, you know that this is, it's infringing on the appearance of the neighborhood, and maybe make you feel somewhat uncomfortable as I approach you, because that's the way it appears on the road. And I'm surprised that Ms. Cannon would actually allow the, to lift the stop work order permit without, even though she does not necessarily have to let you know that, this has been a very emotional, moral issue for our community. It's been going on for several weeks, if not months, and I'm very disappointed at you that you would not even brief your leaders on this situation, that she may even want to be reprimanded for this. Thank you.
Daniel, next.
Nancy Moore. I'm going to say wow, and I'm going to change the subject. So, I am Nancy Moore, the owners of Boneheads, it was my pleasure to serve you folks tonight. And I just kind of, I'm a little emotional listening to all this, it's my first city council meeting, but anyway. I would just like to draw attention to the Town Boulevard Center in which we own and run Boneheads. They continue to add more tenants and more tenants and more tenants, and there is no parking to support the tenants that are currently there. So, just this week, I've talked to my banker, the franchise owner, and our attorneys, because if the parking doesn't improve, we've got to close the business. We just can't continue to run the organization with the lack of parking that's available for us. And I speak for a lot of the tenants that are out there, and this is my first foray into owning a business, but I've got to stop and wonder if this center wasn't given some sort of variance or something in order to put this big center up with the lack of parking that's there. So, my request to the city is, when you get more pressing issues, I can see that those really are important to a lot of people. If you ever have an opportunity, I'd like, maybe your input on solutions, I've gone to the landlord, the other tenants have gone to the landlord, we're looking at some designating parking, they tend to, as I would imagine, big organizations like this do cater towards the larger organizations, they're giving priority parking to the CineBistro, the larger, there is a tenant out there that owns three of the restaurants now, and so they're getting valet parking and things of that nature. But, you know, we went into this with good faith, thinking that, you know, every would get equal access to parking, and it doesn't really seem to be the case. So, I know you can't respond, but if you have some solutions, you know, my facility, I think most of you have been there, but we back up, we're right beside AT&amp;T, so we're right in the front of the road, and behind me is a parking space, which I'm trying to work with them to give us some sort of designated parking, you know, we'd like some kind of monitoring, they have two-hour parking right there, which really doesn't work with my restaurant, but there's no monitoring of the parking, there's no enforcement of what they have out there, so the handicap parking spaces don't maintain vacancies for handicap, and I don't know, because it's private, that I can't even call in, I've got a couple of handicap folks that love my establishment, but they won't come anymore because they can't park. So, you know, there are some things that I think legally that we can do, but not a lot. And again, as you're looking at things, the driving in and out of this facility, I think could be improved, I know that's a state road, and I don't know if you guys have any impact on that, but I'd like to follow up with you and, you know, a little bit more. But, thank you for listening, and again, if you come up with some solutions, or you have an opportunity to speak with Semler or work with them again, perhaps you just keep this issue in mind. Thank you.
Daniel, next.
Laura Van. Hi, Mr. Mayor and the Council.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Daniel, you can bring a little bit further down if you would.
There we go.
Thank you.
I'm with the Friends of Blackburn Park, we're the newest formed Friends Up group, but we're excited about what y'all are doing with the parks, and you're to be commended for the speed and the value that you saved us, getting the city in place, preserving the green space, and improving our quality of life. Blackburn is the second largest park, and we've already determined the top five for that park. The lighting, there's three places that need lighting, the pavilion, behind the tennis center, and then behind the soccer fields. It'll secure the people walking through and the pedestrians, and as you know, there's a big complex about to open there soon, so there'll be even more people that can walk around safely and enjoy this beautiful place we have. Repave the parking lot in the drive, the big parking lot off of Ashford Dunwoody, the north side of the pavilion, remove the backstop, resurface the multipurpose field, and do something with that fencing around the pavilion, people get confused, and they drive in and out on the, what's supposed to be the walking way, and it's a little insecure for pedestrians. Tennis center bathrooms, I'm not going to say anymore, that would be a big improvement, because a lot of people come in and out of the tennis center, we want them to think Brookhaven is as special as we think Brookhaven is, because it's a jewel. And then, last but not least, in consideration, bathrooms and parking near the pavilion, because the pavilion's getting a lot more use. Again, you're to be commended, I worked for the federal government virtually for Washington, DC, so the speed and the ease that y'all worked in the last year to get all this for our community is great. Thank you very much.
Point of clarification for you, Ms. Van, is the priority from the Friends of Blackburn, is the bathroom situation, either a new bathroom or that, fixing up that bathroom, or the pavilion, the number one priority?
The tennis center bathrooms would come first, because the pavilions would have to be built, and the tennis center bathrooms are in pretty bad disrepair.
Would it be more feasible to have a, build a separate bathroom? Because I've always thought that was kind of strange to go into the tennis center for the bathroom, maybe a bathroom closer, maybe in the middle of the park or something like that, would that be a better option, you think, or no?
Yes, if you could build them where they were convenient to the tennis center, because the tennis center gets a lot of use. They're one of the places for the city playoffs.
Right.
So, they get a lot of use, at least four times a year.
Okay.
So, you know, more bathrooms, yes, and then improvement to the bathrooms.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your volunteerism.
I appreciate it.
Laura was out there planting bulbs and flowers with everybody too, so thank you.
All right. Daniel?
Tom Shepherd. Council, Mayor, Tom Shepherd, 1672 Frested Court. I want to generally disagree with the premise being established that in adopting the zoning map, we created new zoning rights that did not exist before. We have created a quagmire, where as a city, we're required to follow that zoning map, but it became very clear through the governor's commissions and other legal precedent, that you can't start the city and change zoning from DeKalb County, that we would have to adopt all the existing property rights, zoning rights, that existed under DeKalb County that property owners and the citizens had, and then we would have to follow proper due process, proper public hearings, to go about and change all of these rights. So, in adopting an inaccurate map, what you inadvertently have done is created a quagmire where you have to follow that map, and yet, it is not a legal and right map, and property owners, citizens affected nearby, are then forced to go through the court system and sue and say, we've tracked down this record, and this is not right, so we've obviously created a quagmire. But, the general premise that this zoning map somehow establishes in time that these rights are solid, I disagree with that general premise, I feel, is, whether it's in the public or whatever's being discussed, because it doesn't really establish that as a proper state of Georgia Supreme Court when you get done with it right. What it does is, we have legal opinions of council, we have, you know, opinions of how things are, but we've created an odd quagmire where we're having to be told to follow this map and some of these zoning ordinances that may not stand up in court once they're sued. So, I think it's important to realize what we've done in making these mistakes, and it was part of the problem of the schedule that was set up and the rush to create a city that we didn't really have the procedures in time to have the professionals in place to do a lot of these things.
Ronnie, Mayor.
I'm not sure we can do double comment, can we not?
I didn't use all my time up.
Ronnie, we'd like to, we'd like to try to keep, move the meeting along, but keep the, you know, if everybody gets a two shots, it's just not conducive. the, you know, if everybody gets a two shots, it's just not conducive.
Well, sometimes you flip a lot, let's say, two cards, one card, you know, and...
Well, you have another public comment time at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, you can use that comment for. Just, just, just wait till the end, and you have, you have another three minutes. Thank you. All right. Consent agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have six, six items on the consent agenda. The first three deal with meeting minutes from November twenty-second and two meetings on November twenty-sixth. We did hear from Terrell this evening regarding, uh, the correction of minutes from November the twenty-sixth.
So the motion would have to reference that?
Yes, please. And then, uh, item number four, uh, deals with the city holidays, the established city holidays, and then items number five and six are for the lease renewal here for Two Corporate Square, and also a holdover lease for Two Hundred Ashford Center North.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I will move that, uh, council approve the consent agenda, subject to item number three being revised, and, uh, Daniel's holding up his hand that he has a version of it. So, uh, the only thing I'll say is, um, it'd be revised to the satisfaction of our city clerk.
Mr. Guevia, please, um, let me be sure, because on November twenty-sixth, we had a work session and a...
It said number three.
...the rest of it, so it's, it's, I don't know. Okay, thank you, sir. Just wanted to be sure we were...
To be more specific, comments in this end of the session.
Thank you.
Sure, second? Seconded? Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the consent agenda as moved by Council McGevia, please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, announcements?
Uh, yes, um, we have a number of announcements. The first item is the approval and confirmation of planning commission appointments by the mayor and confirmation by council.
Looking for the page, hold on a second.
Page thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Here we go. I'd like to appoint to the planning commission, Jeff O'Connell from Ashford Park, Bert Levy from Brookhaven Fields?
Correct.
Brookhaven Fields, and Caitlin Miller from Ashford Park to the planning commission. Is there a motion?
Are they here?
I know one's here, but if they need to do a motion...
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm move that we so approve your nominees for planning commission.
I'll second.
Any discussion or comment?
Just like to congratulate a, a good group of people.
Caitlin is hiding in the back of the room, but...
If you'll stand, Ms. Miller.
Representing District Two, so just...
Thank you.
Thank you for your, uh, service.
And we'll, we'll be swearing the, the planning commission members in next week on Tuesday, unless you want to, unless you want to be sworn in tonight, unless you can't... Thank you. All right. Any more discussion or comment? All right, all in favor of approval of the appointees for the planning, Brookhaven Planning Commission, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Mr. Mayor, are these one- or two-year terms?
They're two-year terms.
Congratulations to, um, the appointees, Ms. Miller included. Thank you. And also, that, on that Tuesday, if you could notify, uh, Ms. Cannon, if you could notify the outgoing members of the planning commission as well, that maybe they can come, be recognized, and they'll be reappointed to other things as well. Thank you.
Okay, item number two is the announcement of the steering committee members by the mayor. There is no requirement for confirmation, that these are just appointments, um, of the mayor.
I'm gonna defer that announcement.
All right.
City birthday celebration?
Yes.
I'll talk about that, and maybe Megan could. The, uh, we have two, uh, city birthday celebrations. One is the Saturday from, at Blackburn Park, from one to six, there'll be a three-k race, food trucks, Santa, and a marching band, and some other activities, bearing a time capsule. However, because the forecast, uh, right now for rain, um, pretty high chance of rain on that Saturday, uh, where that's, the event could be canceled, and it could be moved, some of those activities could be moved to the following week, so we'll have, uh, an announcement on that later on this week about the birthday celebration on the fourteenth. So just if it's gonna be, if the weather looks like it's good, we'll go ahead and go forward that event. If it's not, we'll know by Thursday or Friday, uh, if it's gonna go forward. So just keep your ears to the ground on that one. Also, on the following Tuesday, the seventeenth, at seven third, seven?
Seven P.M.
Seven P.M., at Town Brookhaven on the Green, uh, and part of the concrete area as well, there'll be a, a birthday commemoration ceremony. We're gonna be honoring the volunteers who helped, uh, build the city, staff as well, and, uh, other, other dignitaries will be there as well. So if you want to come to that, it's, um, gonna be, the price of admission is a can of food for our local food bank. So we'd appreciate if you wanted to come to that, uh, commemoration, we'd love you to have you there. All right, reports and presentations?
We've forgotten the town hall.
A town hall?
Uh, we have a town hall meeting scheduled for December the sixteenth at Oglethorpe University Leapton Hall.
That's Monday at, um...
At seven P.M.
P.M., at Leapton Hall. Oh, City Hall. Okay, we also have, um, Marie, do you have an announcement about a...
Yes, I do.
Employee?
I'm very pleased to announce our new, um, first-ever Parks and Recreation Director, Ray Holloway, uh, who has served for over twenty years in the Parks and Recreation Field as a director, uh, from Mississippi, and, uh, he will be reporting for duty on January the thirteenth. He will be attending our council meeting on December the seventeenth, and will also take part in the reception following that meeting. He will be spending the entire day, uh, on Tuesday. He'll be with me, and then, um, I've set some meetings up for him, and he'll be going back to Mississippi, um, later on Wednesday, the day following.
Thank you, Laura Smith.
Sorry.
Just wanna say, we, uh, I got an email from, this, Mr. Holloway's hometown newspaper owner sent an email to me today saying we had done good, and he said that two or three times in the email, that, you know, we've hired an excellent, um, Parks and Rec Director, and they're very, very upset to see him go, but that we're, our parks should be the envy of the metro area within five years with him at the helm. So we're very excited about that, and very excited for the work Marie did on that. Also, as you may have gotten in a newsletter or heard on, uh, some electronic media, we have come to a verbal agreement on the location of our city hall, uh, which is the former GSU building, uh, next to Town Brookhaven on Peachtree Road. It's in, obviously in Brookhaven, and it's also about a hundred yards from the geographic center of the city, which was a very important criteria for us, in addition to cost being the primary mover. But, uh, we're very excited about that. We're, it's, it's, it's our, um, temporary location in that we don't envision it as being the long-term location to city hall. We'll be there for four to five years, and we'll look to go to another place, uh, within the city and around the same area, hopefully, if it works out for our, our new city hall. But we are excited that the, uh, city hall is located no more than three miles from any one residence in Brookhaven, so nobody will have to drive more than three miles to come to their city hall and get a permit, gripe, or compliment. So we're, we're very excited about that. We also have a, uh, location for our police department. It's at, on Beaufort Highway. The chief and, and other police have been very excited about getting out of the cramped quarters they have in our city hall in Dunwoodie and getting over there. We hope to have them in that building within the next few weeks, before the end of the month, certainly, because it doesn't require a lot of renovation or, or demolition. It's a great location, that's where they get most of their business, and they're, they're excited about going in there. So, uh, we, that's been a big burden for us, while the many dozens of things that we're dealing with when it comes to setting up a city from, from nothing to something. Getting our facilities nailed down inside the city was a much more difficult task than any of us could have imagined, and I want to thank Marie for her hard work on that. I want to thank Councilman Iyer in particular, um, for kinda, he, he had found several locations for us, this one, the one where the city hall is gonna be was one of them. Uh, he's got a good vision when it comes to what kind of facilities would be, will fit, uh, a small city government like ours, and, um, he's done a lot of good work on it, and he's, you know, he's worn several hats when it comes to laying out floor plans and, and alerting us to possible pitfalls. So thank you, Jim, for, uh, you should almost get a commendation for, for all that work, but, uh, we appreciate it. Anybody else have any comment? I'm sure there's gotta be a little bit of comment about this.
Well, I, I just want to say how thrilled I am that the police are gonna be able to move into some better quarters. It pains me every day to pass them in. Uh, they are crammed into offices, some, some guys, uh, working on a, uh, like a TV tray, you know, they're like four and five to an office, and, uh, we kid that we're gonna have to install bunk beds or something in there, because they're just really too cramped.
The smells from the evidence room are interesting.
So, I, I am thrilled that they're gonna have their own quarters and be able to really spread out, and I, I think just for their own morale and, and team building, they, they need to have their own spot and, uh, and be able to work together, so I'm really excited about that.
Y'all don't get out of control down there without any supervision. That's, you know, y'all being down there all by yourself, don't think you can just do what you want down there and run rampant. Jim, do you have any comments?
No, I think it's just, it's, we're to the point now where we can, as, as I think you said, we're gonna move out of Dunwoodie and back into Brookhaven, and I'm excited about getting everybody back in the city limits. Uh, I think that the police location will be very good, and it's accessible to, to some of their high-priority areas, it's also accessible to, uh, the DeKalb County Jail and, and the, uh, the facilities that they're using, uh, to support their activities. I think city hall, uh, you know, without a doubt, we've driven by it many times, and as Jed Beersley said earlier, it wasn't available. Unfortunately, we're able to, uh, uh, come up with a deal that works out for everybody, and I think the owner's excited, and I think we're, it's, it will be a good place for us.
I'll just, I'll just have quick comments. It's funny that I used to go to Georgia State University to do my grad school work on nights and weekends, and I'm gonna be going right back in nights and weekends to spend all my time in that same building. I'm glad that, that it, uh, is on Peachtree Road. It is still a temporary location, a five-year lease, um, where, you know, but, but it will bring all of our, uh, administrative staff to the heart of Brookhaven, so they'll be walking around Brookhaven, shopping in Brookhaven, seeing what we see every day in Brookhaven, and hopefully, um, you know, uh, as I know they already do, just grow to love Brookhaven even more. And I'm very glad that the police department found the home that was their number-one, uh, pick, and so I'm glad that we have pulled the trigger on getting them, uh, in there as quickly as possible.
And our court will remain here for the time being, but eventually the idea is to have the court in, in this similar location, either the police department or at the, uh, at the Georgia State Building, I'm not sure where, but, uh, we'll be here for what year?
One more year, correct.
Right, we put a little bit of money into this.
Yes.
That thing right there. Costs us a little bit, so we want to get some utilization out of this building and this room. Thank you very much for the work you did on this, Marie, and, and everybody on the staff, Brad too, Brad, if he's still here. There you go, thank you, Brad. And thank you again, council, and, uh, 'cause we spent a lot of time as council going over numbers and figures and locations and going back and forth, and something would get pulled or not pulled, so we're, it was a tedious sometimes operation, but it's so worth it, and I'm excited. All right.
Um, Mr. Mayor, may I just make one comment on our, um, excuse me, on the December seventeenth, uh, city council meeting? We are, we have a work session starting at three-thirty, and at four-thirty, we have our council meeting, but within that council meeting, we are gonna have a public hearing on a zoning matter that's traveling from the planning commission, uh, to all of you.
Okay.
And that's at four-thirty.
All right.
And just to let you know, we did receive a, a written notice from the applicant indicating that they will be asking for deferral.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right.
Um, the next item is, um, reports and presentations and...
Hold on, did Joe have an announcement?
No, not sure.
Nothing at all?
We'll just move the meeting along.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Um, the next item is the update on the zoning map audit, but we've talked about
We've gone over that, all right.
Uh, old business, we don't have any matters...
All right.
Under that, but under new business, we do have three items. Uh, the first is a resolution amending the municipal court schedule of fees.
Is there a, a motion? Do we need a motion?
I'll move that we adopt, uh, resolution two thousand thirteen dash twelve dash oh one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there discussion? We had a, a pretty good discussion on the fees and the crimes that are being listed along with the fees at the work session, so I think we beat that horse. Anybody else have any comment? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the resolution, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the resolution's adopted, number two?
Uh, number two is the resolution to adopt the budget for the fiscal year beginning January one, two thousand fourteen, and ending December thirty-one, two thousand fourteen.
All right, is there a motion?
Jim?
Jim, you want to make that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Caught you not paying attention for once there, hold on.
I was looking ahead at my notes. I move that we, uh, defer this until our next meeting, uh, uh, December seventeen, uh, and approve the budget at that time.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I think it's a good idea to defer this, 'cause there's still, there's a little bit of work in progress to today, so it'll be, just out of a bunch of caution, I think council has recommended that we defer this, and...
Not only that, I'd like to get the final budget on the website as soon as we can, so that the, the public can have an opportunity to spend a day or two looking at it before we approve it. We've had changes, necessary changes right up until the last minute, and, and I, I think we need to, uh, post it, give it a chance to settle for a little bit, see if, um, uh, see if we have any comments from, um, from the residents prior to approval.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, signify so by saying aye.
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 I'm gonna, I'm sorry, to defer, adopting the deferral of the resolution, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the resolution is deferred.
Okay, the third and final item under new business is an ordinance, um, two thousand thirteen dash twelve dash zero one, approval of ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Administration, Section Two dash sixty-six, budgetary policies action by the city manager and the mayor to present budget to the council.
All right, is there a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we approve ordinance, ORD, two thousand thirteen dash twelve dash oh one, approval of ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Administration, Section Two dash twenty-six, budgetary policies, action by the city manager and mayor to present budget to council.
Seconded? Um, that was section two dash sixty-six.
That's what I said.
Twenty-six.
I apologize, two dash sixty-six, to clarify.
All right.
Seconded?
Any discussion?
Go ahead.
Just a point of clarification for the public, that I think that this, the intent of this ordinance is to allow us to present a better thought-out budget to the public, so that it doesn't mislead the public by putting out a budget earlier than we have the actual numbers. So that's just a point of clarification.
Yeah, it's, it's intended to not, yeah, mislead, but not to frighten or cause alarm among our citizenry on...
Still with ample time for review.
On a very rough, yeah, right, a very rough budget that really won't end up looking like it's in final form, which gives us more time to review too.
And, and if I may, just to, to add, uh, it will also give us more reliability on the anticipated revenues, uh, being closer to the time when we collect them.
Right, that's important too. All right, go ahead, Jim.
I guess my only concern is, is we change, um, in one of the items, we're eliminating at least one week prior to the passage of the budget. Councils will hold at least two special public hearings. Um, I guess my question is, why are we removing the at least one week prior to the passage of the budget?
I, I can, I can answer that, Councilman. Really, the changes were to conform with the charter as far as the budgetary issues. Uh, the charter such as requires only one hearing, but we continue to have at least two. My recommendation to, and, and that language that was deleted about one week before was really there just in case you're in the last week of December and you've got to pass a budget. It's a possibility that could take place that you haven't gotten to that point.
Right.
And that's, that's, you know, that's, that's the, that's the intention behind there. Because if you, you're, you're really pushing yourself back in the event that you are, you know, having difficulty negotiating a budget. And the other side of it is, is that under the charter, if you can't, if you cannot come to an agreement on a budget, then the budget presented by the city manager and the mayor become the budget. So that, that adds, that adds an additional week really to, to deal with the process so you don't get caught short.
So the requirement for two public hearings prior to the, the adoption of the budget, none of that changed? It's just?
No.
You're just removing a, a time limitation?
That's right.
Or a time requirement, I guess, for the, from the budget? Okay.
Thank you, any more discussion? Alright, all in favor of adoption of the ordinance, signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Alright, no one's just passed. Do we have any other business?
No.
Public comments? Rodney, do you want to do a comment?
I've just got a few more things to say. The word you used earlier was a hiccup. That's a scary word to use, hiccup, but hey, that's what you want to call it. About three months ago, we had the meeting in here on the height restrictions on the threshold. And you said that if it was a problem, you would revisit it. And there was not enough people here for the vote. And, and Mayor Davis, you broke the tie on the vote for the, to change the height restrictions. I don't even know if you know anything about height restrictions of building or if that's one of your specialties. But I don't understand why you voted on it that night to change it. But I think y'all knew because we were saying there was a problem with that house then. And I think the reason y'all changed it just to cover your rear ends then. And now it's turned out to be such a problem. But you did say back then, if it was a problem, you would revisit it. And so now we're asking to revisit it. And you're more worried about having meetings for builders. What about us people who own property there? My wife and I own, you know, over five properties in Ashford Park. What about us? We pay taxes. Don't we have a right to? Or you just worry about the builders? This guy that, that just did his house, it's out, you know, out in the street, you know, just like, like that. He's had his builder's license for eight months, seven months? What does he know? Not too much, but y'all have listened to him and not us taxpayers. And I don't understand. I have a real problem with it. But I do appreciate y'all, one thing, of saying an ad a boy for our, our council member, Jim Iyer in Ashford Park. When we voted for him, we knew he knew zoning, he knew a lot. And that's why we voted him in there. And this is about the first time I've heard an ad a boy from all y'all for Jim. And I appreciate that. And, but still, you know, I can sleep every night. I don't know how y'all twist things around and say, you know, it's not my fault. I don't have to answer to y'all. Whatever, whoever was, how can you sleep at night? I sleep every night. What's done is wrong. You got to put on your big boy pants to right it. And it just, each one of y'all keeps saying, well, I mean, and us people back in the bag, we're not stupid. We're not stupid at all. But you make us feel that way because you said, well, I don't have to tell you, you don't have to tell me this is why we do things. It still smells, thank you.
Any more, any more comment? Alright, that's the end of the public comment section. Mayor's comments, just again to remind you about the Saturday birthday celebration, about the Tuesday birthday commemoration, about the town hall on Monday. Any other things I need to talk about, say? Go to the city website to check for rain delays or rain, rainouts for the thing on Saturday. And we're still, still collecting time capsule submissions, alright?
I have a...
Oh, you might do a robo-call on the... Oh, we'll be, okay, we'll be recording on City Hall's voicemail for you to check on whether the, I guess for Friday, so people can call in and say, okay, okay, Friday night, Saturday morning, on the, whether the event Saturday is going forward.
On this time capsule, Megan, do you have any suggestions that, to the public about submissions that, that they can put in? If not, I can, I can give some ideas. You know, some of the things that I think were, would be important are just imagine the future Brookhaven resident 25 years from now. And I think it would be very interesting to see some of our, you know, both kids and adults write what they expect to see in 25 years. What do you think Brookhaven's going to be in 25 years? Pictures of their house. I mean, things that people would like to reflect upon 25 years from now that'll be opened up. And that, those will be very important things for that next generation of Brookhaven people to see what we were thinking at this time.
Also, there was a wonderful, our, some of the submissions that we had submitted for the time capsule, particularly Councilman Williams, but something I had submitted was a poem from a resident, was a great poem about his feelings on Brookhaven and having lived here a long time. His name was Don Best. He sent it by mail, it went in the box for the submissions for the time capsule. The stuff in the time capsule, I don't, we don't know what happened to it. We got, we got most of the materials, we have backups to most of those materials, but that's the one thing we don't have. So it's an APB on a Mr. Don Best. If anybody knows him, he's, submitted a great poem and we'd like to get a copy of that poem again. So we need to do some investigating there. I had, want to see if we can get the police to do a skip trace or something on it, see if we can find where he is. But we really would like to get another copy of that poem because it was a great poem, like professionally done. Alright, anything else? GIS? Yeah. Alright, we'll try and find him. Alright, I have no more comments, we don't need an executive session. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment, signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned, thank you folks for coming out.